Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Des Moines City Council meeting for August 7th. Let's call this meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss? Shoemaker? Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I will say that on the consent agenda this evening, item 36 was added its policy. There's...
Move approval.
No others. Been moved?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Move on to item three. Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 46. Item five, county votes no. Item 11, Mandelbaum wishes to speak.
Move approval, Your Honor.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote, please.
Six yes.
All right, that takes us to the hearing items. And this evening... For the hearing items this evening, we have one dismissal, of which no public comment will be taken. Several conveyance hearings, three zoning hearings, items 50 to 52, several public financing hearings, and one informal hearing. As a reminder, for the zoning hearings only, which are again 50, 51, and 52, we will hear from the parties in interest first, and then from the general public. Remind everybody, the parties in interest for the zoning items include only the applicant for the zoning, and those persons who are living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to which the city has sent notices. After all those parties and interests have communicated, we will open it up for the general public to speak on the zoning items. I will ask everyone else, please don't step up to the microphone unless you are that applicant to begin with, or you are a person in that 250 feet that's received that mailed notice. Again, if anyone approaches the mic before it's time, they will be compared to the list, and if you're not on that list, you'll be considered to be disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting. For the zoning items, after all the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be called upon for the germane public comment, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes per hearing, unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane public comments, or if there is no one that further wishes to speak. For the informal and finance hearings this evening, any person may make germane comments, and not to exceed, again, one minute per person until the comments cease. For all other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments, again, and not to exceed the one minute to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended, again, for the failure to make germane, or when the comments cease. With that, let's go ahead and get started, and with our first hearing item. Item 47 is dismissing the hearing for the vacation of segments of Ingersoll Avenue right-of-way and conveyance of easements for the bus shelter encroachment on the city-owned property of the Des Moines Area Regional Transit Authority for $1,320, continued from June 26, 2023 council meeting.
I'll move item 47.
Item 47?
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
All right, takes us to item 48. Item 48 is on the conveyance of excess city property locally known as 4030-53rd Street to Berry-Puddinger for side yard purposes, $500. Again, germane comments from the general public. Anyone want to make anything regarding this excess property?
Seeing none, Your Honor, move item 48.
Second.
48's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 49... Is on the conveyance of 29 Hartford Avenue to Q Enterprises LLC for the rehabilitation of housing, $30,000, council communication number 23-376. Again, statement on the agenda, the general comments from the public. We'll open it up. Anybody want to speak to the conveyance at 29 Hartford Avenue?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 49.
Item 49's moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 50 is on a request from SNS Home Builders LLC. Nick Stevenson is the officer to rezone the property located at 3605 East 56th Street from N1A Neighborhood District to N2B2 Neighborhood District to subdivide and allow development of the property into three lots with two household units per lot. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, waivers requested by the applicant, and will require six votes. First, we'll ask, again, for the parties in interest on this zoning item. Are there any parties in interest in the audience? Seeing none, we'll ask for any comments from the general public, again, regarding this rezoning.
See none, Your Honor. Go ahead.
Moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 51 is on a request from the Neighborhood Development Corporation. Abby Gilroy is the officer for property located in the vicinity of 3103 Forest Avenue to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from neighborhood mixed use within a neighborhood node to community mixed use within a neighborhood node, and to rezone the property from MX1 Mixed Use District to RX1 Mixed Use District to allow the development of the property for two multi-household apartment buildings. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waivers requested by the applicant, and again, requires six votes. We'll again ask if there's any parties in interest here that would wish to speak this evening. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's any comments to be made from the general public regarding this property at 3103 Forest.
If not, I'll move 51A and B.
51A and B been moved.
Six yes.
Item 52 is on a request from Euclid Foresight LLC. Brandon Boldis is the officer for property located at 3619 Fifth Avenue to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to neighborhood mixed use within a neighborhood node, and to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to limited MX1 Mixed Use District to allow the use of the property as a surface parking lot accessory to the property to the south. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waivers requested, again, by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, we'll ask, open it up, and ask if there's any parties in interest who wish to speak on this. Seeing none, let me ask if there's any comments from the general public regarding this Euclid Foresight LLC at 3619 Fifth Avenue.
Second.
Been moved?
Six yes.
Item 53 is on the proposed first amendment to the urban renewal plan for the East Army Post Road Urban Renewal Area, council communication number 23-358. We'll ask if anyone from the general public would like to make any comments regarding this amendment to the urban renewal plan.
See none, Your Honor. I'll move item 53.
Item 53 has been moved. Been moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 54 is on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP1, council communication number 23-373, is authorization for additional action. Again, we'll open it up, see if there's any comments from the general public. Okay, we have one speaker.
Hello, Adam Callanan, Word Three. Across several items today, council is voting on whether to take $56.3 million in debt as part of a new project with what's known as the nationwide building. I'm asking that the council postpone this vote until the city has released the plans for the building publicly and held listening sessions, or vote yes and additionally direct city staff to release the plans and hold listening sessions. The city should not be taking on $1 million of debt for a project without releasing what the plans are in detail. There haven't been sufficient communications with the public, public input sessions, or even council discussion around this plan. There have simply been brief blurbs and press releases and piecemeal votes. The project is clearly being discussed and planned out behind closed doors, which in part is expected, but not when you're already approving $56 million for it. The fact that it's happened behind closed doors makes it hard to comment on. The appearance is that people like Scott Sanders and DMPPD may be planning this behind closed doors. We don't even know if that's what's actually happening, because again, there's just not really public information about this. One of my main concerns is that baked into the plan is the new DMPPD modern pleasing facility, similar vein to Cop City Project in Atlanta, and it's unclear what percent of the funds here are meant for that portion of the project. The city should not be planning to spend millions to boost DMPPD, especially while sitting on recommendations.
Step forward. Is there anyone else to speak on this item?
Kristen Anderson, Beavertale. I second all of what Adam said regarding the lack of transparency regarding this plan. Assuming that it is a plan to fund a new police station, I would like to ask you not to move forward with that. I oppose any efforts to further fund, to further move funding towards policing that already takes up 35% of the general budget. Those funds could be used in a variety of different ways that would be better spent, like more bike infrastructure, air cleaning filtration system for all Des Moines public school classrooms, dignified affordable permanent housing for our houseless neighbors, improvements for bathrooms at city parks to allow them to be open year-round, public bathrooms and water stations, free swimming lessons, more recreational facilities for people to use in the winter, mental health resources, addiction resources. Any of these would be better spent, better ways to spend funds than a new police station. Thank you.
All right, is this the last speaker on this item? If not, I'd like, anybody else that wants to speak, raise your hand. We're trying to... Go ahead, sir.
Marco Battelli, 517 Leland. I've just paid pretty close attention, and I just would like the council to clarify some of those points that first speaker had, because I'm not sure if that's accurate, and I would like to know if any of those were accurate.
Okay.
Jolene Prescott, I live at 3013 Third Street in Des Moines. The police station, the police still need to do their work, and the building is getting old over there, and needs to be updated. I... I know people don't like the police, but we need them, and we need to support them. Thank you.
All right, council?
See none. Go ahead, if you want to move it.
I'll move 54, 54A.
I'll second.
54 and 54A moved. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 55 is on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds for the general corporate purposes, GCP2, council communication number 23-373, A is authorization for additional action. Again, we'll open it up. Anyone want to make any comments on this?
Hello, again, my name is Adam Callanan, Word Three. I'd like to continue things similarly, because this is a lot of action across multiple items. It's all the same council communication, same thing underneath it. So I just want to say the city should not be spending, planning to spend millions of dollars more to boost DMPPD, especially while sitting on recommendations from 21st Century Policing, Public Works LLC, the Responsible Hospitality Institute Court Avenue Study, and the Marijuana Task Force. We've seen all those things, no actions happening on those, but now suddenly, without a lot of discussion, without asking the public if that's what they want, we're seeing this kind of get pushed through seemingly, again, behind closed doors, because it's just not transparent as to whether or not that's what's happening here. Des Moines People's Sound Hall anticipates to submit FOIA record requests for the plans if the city is refusing to. Also, I'd like to express, I understand that a lot of people do support the police. I don't understand if that is the case, and I think widely it is, why we can't have public listening sessions, and those people can speak, the police department can speak and talk about this plan. I don't understand why that is not able to be happening. It should not just be blind support without any questioning, any plan, any publication beyond just like a line in a press release. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Okay, Jolene, and then...
Jolene Prescott, I live at 3013 Third Street. The police station is getting old, and it needs to be updated. Plus, we're having other community entities in this building also. We're going to end up saving money in the long run by getting, and being able to update our buildings. So I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Marco?
Marco Battelli, 517 Leland. Just wanted to add that that was an issue that I did show up for, was our, the ways that we look at policing, and specifically, specifically that bit about how we prioritize marijuana. I was Carl Voss's opponent in the at-large, and I think if you remember, maybe your team had asked for my endorsement, and that was one of the issues they asked if, that I asked. I was like, would you consider perhaps thinking about the way that you talk to the police about how they handle marijuana? Today, something historic happened. We can go a couple hours... Thank you. We can go a couple hours to the north, and people there have the freedom to grow and possess their own medicine, and we can go a couple hours to Illinois, and people have that freedom. And I think it's really a shame that people can still get harassed in our city streets just for having that freedom, so I would ask Carl that maybe you do something about that, and I would appreciate it very much.
All right?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move this item, and I'll note that these bonds are for HVAC, electrical, and plumbing improvements.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded?
Six yes.
Item 56 is on the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-3, council communication number 23-373, is the authorization for additional action. Again, let's open it up for comment.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, Word Three. I don't have more platter marks, but as I've apparently been admonished by my word council person, all of these items about the bonds are related to the same council communication, which specifically talks about all of the bonds. It's not clear from the items which one is which. Probably you could spend an hour and figure out which is which, but that's also part of my comment, is that in the agenda, it's very not clear what these items are actually for, the way that the main agenda is, until you go and click through. Just like to be clear on that. Thank you.
Mayor, can I clarify? I mean, the items are labeled, and at the end of the item, this item, for example, is GCP-3. There is an item in the blue letter. All of these are in the same blue letter, but there is a section in the blue letter called GCP-3, and that has four line items in that portion of the blue letter. And that is what this particular item is for, is the four line items under GCP3. The previous one, GCP2 in the blue letter, talked about the HVAC, electrical, and plumbing. This item is energy conservation, security improvements at city facilities citywide, public art, and swimming pool and aquatic infrastructure improvements. So the blue letter does correspond to the agenda item. That's all I was pointing out, because the discussion was not about the specific item for these specific bonds, and if the concern was about transparency, the goal is to make sure folks know what this particular bond is for.
Is it about that property at all? I'm just kind of confused now.
One of...
Because I used to actually work there for Nation One, but I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that, some of the things, the first term of the major actuary or not, because the language makes it kind of vague what this is actually about.
Mr. Mayor, any comment?
Again, Councilmember Mandelbaum has it correct, that the link to this communication as shown on the screen would give you all the detail of each of these, and these first several are not dealing with the aspect of the nationwide.
Exactly what the items are.
And the roll calls as well, so either one of those two would get you to all that detail.
So with that.
56 and 56A have been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 57 on the issuance of not to exceed $900,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP4, council communication number 23-373, A is the authorization for additional action. Again, we'll open it up.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded?
57, 57A.
Six yes.
58 on the issue of not to exceed $900,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP5, council communication number 23-373, A is authorization for additional action. Open it up. Anybody want to speak on this one?
Seeing no one, I'll move 58 and 58A.
58 and 58A have been moved and seconded.
Six yes.
59 is on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP6, council communication number 23-373, is the authorization for additional action. Open it up again. Anyone want to make general comments here?
59A.
I'll second.
59, 59A been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote. Carl?
Six yes.
60 on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, council communication number 23-373, is the authorization for additional action. And we'll open it up for any general comment, public. Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll move 60 and 68.
Second.
60 and 68 been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
61 on the issuance of not to exceed $41 million general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes, council communication number 23-373, A is authorization for additional action. We'll open it up for any comment on this one.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 61, 61A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
62 on the issuance of not to exceed $28 million general obligation urban renewal bonds for urban renewal purposes, council communication number 23-373, is the authorization for additional action. Any comment? Open it up for the general public.
62 and 62A.
Second.
62 and 62A have been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
63 on the issuance of not to exceed $5 million general obligation urban renewal bonds or corporate loan notes for urban renewal purposes, council communication number 23-373, A is authorization for additional action. Open it up. Anybody from the general public want to speak on this one?
I'll move 63 and 63A.
Second.
63 and 63A have been moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 64 is on the proposition of entering into a loan agreement in the issuance of not to exceed $50 million general obligation capital loan notes, general fund, to evidence the obligations of the city thereunder. Council communication number 23-373. We'll open it up for general comments. Council?
I'll move item 64.
Second.
64 is moved and seconded.
Six yes.
65 is on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $22 million stormwater management utility revenue bonds, council communication number 23-373, A is the authorization for additional action. Open it up. Anybody want to comment on the stormwater management?
I'll move item 65 and 65A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Six yes. Six, yes.
All right, let's note it is 5:29. And we will move back to item 11. Item 11 is approving and authorizing the execution of the Iowa Department of Transportation IDOT Agreement Number 1-22-STPU-041 for the Walnut Street Bridge Replacement over the Des Moines River, which rescinds IDOT Agreement Number 1-21-STBG-SWAP-016. Council Communication Number 23-372. Councilmember Manabom.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is the same item that we had some discussion on at a work session several weeks ago, and this action represents continuation of the status quo on this project, and I don't think the status quo is what's best. As we know, a complete replacement is significantly more expensive than the repair and rehabilitation option. We're looking at $17 million for a complete replacement and $5 million for repair. I think we can convert this bridge and do it in a way that allows us to envision something better and make this a pedestrian-only bridge that will bear less load, deteriorate less quickly, and provide a better amenity for the community for fewer dollars. And the main arguments that I've heard to keep this, keep this road, I don't think hold up under scrutiny, particularly given some of the actions that we actually just took. One of the arguments is that we need Walnut Street to serve as a thoroughfare from the western part of downtown through the eastern part of downtown. And I've been on the, on the council for six years, and in that entire time, Walnut Street has never been open continuously from the western gateway all the way to the east, East Village. Further, we just, we just took action that will move on funding and bonds that will help move forward with the Nationwide building. And one of the recommendations from the City Manager's Office is that we close a portion of Walnut Street as part of that move. So we will never have—if, as we're going forward, we will not have Walnut Street be a thoroughfare from the western part of downtown to the eastern part of downtown. And we just took action that—in a different item that moves us in that direction. The other argument that I've heard is that we need the Walnut Street Bridge for traffic redundancy, and I find that argument to be even weaker when you look at the data. Between Grand Avenue, Locust, Walnut, and Court Avenue Bridges, the four bridges downtown, there are an estimated 17,000 vehicle trips a day. The capacity of each of those bridges is 12,500 vehicle trips a day. So for 17,000 trips, we have 50,000, 50,000 in vehicle capacity. If we eliminated one bridge entirely, there's still capacity for 37,500 trips. So if we take the Walnut Street Bridge out entirely, we would have more than double on those four bridges, the current capacity that we actually have on those downtown bridges. And the abundance of capacity is even greater if you add the MLK Bridge into the mix. That, that's a bridge that has capacity for almost 40,000 vehicle trips a day. And it's estimated that about half of that capacity, and I think that the estimation or the calculation is probably on the high side, that we're using about half of that capacity. So spending $12 million for redundancy at this point seems wasteful to me. I think that as part of this process, we should be imagining how we can use that space and those dollars differently and better. We have multiple bridges for vehicular traffic. Why not imagine this bridge as a pedestrian bridge or a park space? Think about what kind of amenity we could create on a bridge over the river in the heart of downtown. It would provide unique views and it would be—it could be a destination, something different. It's a great opportunity to think about how we can do things different. The only reason we don't is because we have a bias towards the status quo, and I don't think the status quo cuts it in this case. So I'm, I'm not going to be supportive of this item, and I'm hopeful that we still find time to revisit how we could do this differently.
I also am not supportive of replacing this bridge. I think there are better ways to spend our dollars, and the, the traffic counts don't really justify—historically, we've had a bridge every block. There are very few cities of our size that have bridges this often in their, in their downtown area, so I'm not keen on this idea to replace the bridge, and I'll be voting no on this.
Isn't it necessary, no matter what we do, we have to fix the bottom of the bridge, right, the base, whether you walk across it or drive across it? And that's where the biggest expense is. I think until we understand the makeup of what the market district and all the growth that we could have in the East Village, I think it's a little premature. I think we have to fix it anyway, so I am supporting to fix a bridge and keep people moving across. I mean, it's used, I know, a lot for, other than just travel across. I mean, a lot of people are using some of it for parking, you have the events that are going on. I think, I don't think it's status quo to fix a bridge because you still have to fix it anyway. So you have to do some maintaining of it. It's a terrible condition at the base. It's not as much—it's not great on the top, but the base is the biggest expense. So I'm supporting to get this thing replaced.
I'll move item 11.
I'll second.
I want to say I also support the redoing of this bridge. We are known as a city of bridges and connectivity from the east side to the west side. It's a symbol of people that come and show that we are open for all people, all movement of traffic. We created a bike pedestrian bridge even, even south of Court Avenue using an old railroad bridge. And we are a connected city, and I think that with the expansion of living downtown, continuing working downtown, and also entertaining downtown, this connectivity on all those downtown streets is what has been happening, is what said, status quo, for over 100 years. And we need to support that connectivity for all of our people to move about in this city in the means that they have, whether they're walking, biking, or riding a bus or a car.
Well said.
Four, yes. Two, no. Motion passes.
All right, that takes us now to the informal hearings. Sixty-six on the authorization to proceed with the acquisition of the necessary property interest for the 63rd Street Trail from southwest McKinley Avenue to the Raccoon River Project. Council Communication Number 23-369. Ask the general public if they have any quick comments regarding the 63rd Street Trail from southwest McKinley Avenue to the Raccoon River Project.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 66.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Six, yes.
Item 67. Sixty-seven is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes as follows. Council Communication Number 23-362. Is there an A? At any rate, B. Code correction, update parking restrictions to match the field conditions on East 17th Street between Dean Avenue and Guthrie Avenue. C is a code correction, update code to correct a spelling error on the East 44th Street between Hubble Avenue and Honeybee Ridge. D is a code correction, update parking restrictions to match the field conditions on State Street between East 23rd Street and East 33rd Street. E is a code correction, update parking restrictions to match the field conditions on East Walnut Street between East 18th Street and East 30th Street. F, code correction, update parking restrictions to match field conditions on East Watchers Avenue from South Union Street to East City Limits. And G is a corner clearance parking restrictions. One is East 28th Street and Eastern Boulevard, and two is East Douglas Avenue and Lay Street. Counsel? We have a motion?
I'll move item six—go ahead.
I'll move 67, B, C, D, E, B.
Second.
Then moved and seconded?
Six, yes.
Item 68 is designating the Oak Park Highland Park TIP District Number 5. A is a final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by Cody Christensen, the Development Services Director, and requires six votes. B is the urban renewal development agreement on 36th on Sixth LLC for the renovation of 3614 Sixth Avenue into a mixed-use residential and commercial development in the Oak Park Highland Park Urban Renewal Area. Council Communication Number 23-356.
Your Honor, I will move item 68, A and B.
I'll second.
That's—I did final consideration is A.
All right, it's been moved and seconded?
Six, yes.
Item 69 is amending Sections 134-6.5.2, Section 135-3.8.1, and Table 134-3.1-1, and Table 134-3.9-1 relating to the consumer fireworks sales, alcoholic liquor, wine, beer sales, and utility and public service infrastructure repair or modification. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waiver as requested by Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director. Again, it requires six votes.
Your Honor, I'll move 69 and 69A and just—I know there's not support for it, but there was an interesting editorial in the paper about fireworks, and, you know, we are making a mockery of our police department of how we won't allow fireworks to be used, but the Capitol has allowed them to be sold everywhere. So I would encourage others that are sitting up here to maybe think about that as we enter into next year's Fourth of July, that possibly we would look at, whether it be a one day or a couple days of allowing fireworks use, because the people are going to use them, period, and that's not going to stop, especially with how they're being sold every corner. So I, I know it's not something that no one up here wants to do, but better think about what we're doing here to our police department.
This is basically bringing our codes into conformance with what the state—
Yes.
So just to let people know—
Yes.
That we are—because we can't do anything other than with the state allows us, I guess we can.
Yeah, the state allows us—or is allowing fireworks to be sold basically at any commercial property, and the state is demanding that we change our code because we only had it sold in industrial areas. Correct. So it's going to be like that from—for a while.
And, and I'll second up. Can I just make one comment? Can we have—can I request somebody to check in with the signage? I don't understand why our sign laws allowed fireworks to have five and six signs up.
They did—that, that was then removed as—by the federal district court, that wasn't allowed. And the signage restriction, to the extent that it's would otherwise be zoning, that's going to be a problem, but we'll be happy to look into that for you and give you a written opinion on it.
I mean, I, I guess it's true. I just, I just think it's odd that, that they get to put up signs everywhere. I mean, it just dirties up every street corner to see these huge signs.
And they get to put tents up everywhere, too, you know?
Yeah.
And our hands are tied, and the only thing that we're doing is making a mockery of our police department by not being able to enforce a law that consumers are going to use.
Jeff, as long as you're checking in on this, could you explain how buy one, get four free works? Because I just don't understand. I've never been in retail, but I don't get how that can work, how that's possible.
Most of the citizens I've heard from, you know, I appreciate that we could do away with everything, but it doesn't matter. You can give them one day, they'll take 10. It doesn't really matter, but no one—the calls I received and the disturbance and the chaos that it causes, I don't like their law. We have to abide by it, but I think we have to do something to protect the people that we—and this community, the noise and the disturbance and the damage to our parks alone is terrible.
And that's what we could focus on is focus on our parks, focus on the damage that's being caused by that, instead of trying to run around and answer 800 calls in one day, is what we're trying to do, where we can't enforce anything. But we could, we could enforce our parks, and we could put extra protection in there for that, so.
I mean, I agree we could enforce our parks, and I, I don't fully understand why we're not taking that targeted approach to, to help with our parks. I mean, I think we should talk about how we can better enforce in a targeted and strategic, strategic manner, and that's applicable either, either way, because as Councilmember Bozen said, we allow it for one day, we've still got the same problem during that time period. So I, I welcome the conversation about how we can strategically enforce and provide our, our residents a little, a little more relief and accountability than we're currently providing, but I—and I share the frustrations that others have, have, have mentioned here with the state sort of tying our hands and forcing us not just to, or forcing us to allow the sale and to allow it, allow it to be more visible and in more places, because I don't, I don't think what's going on is, is the right way to do it.
I move 69, 69A.
And I second it, 69 and 69A.
Right, been moved and seconded. I think this conversation needs to continue. Good one, thank you.
Six, yes.
I'll start.
All right, that brings us to item 70. Item 70 is our request to speak from the general public, and I will say for those persons to speak this evening, under the public speaking item on the agenda, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will not be recognized to speak. Each of the six speakers this evening will receive their two minutes to— Each of the six speakers this evening will receive their two minutes to make their comments. Please keep your own time, because at the two-minute mark, the clerk will be shutting off your mic and save time, and we're going to move on to the next speaker. We want to hear from all of our residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints, even if they're different from your own. Any rate, let's open up and start with Anna Campos.
I have some pictures I want to put up here. Anna Campos, 1418 D Wolf Street. Let's see. On May 17th of last year, I came forward to you guys as a mother in pain. I lost my daughter Emma in a hit-and-run accident last year. I came to you guys, each and every one of you guys, to come and help me to better our streets. On May 23rd, or actually, it was May 23rd when I came. On June 2nd, we did a walk for Emma. A couple members of the board came to our walk. It has been over a year, and big progress has happened. For me, it's big progress, and we still have a lot to do. So I want to thank each and every one of you guys for your help, because you guys always get bombarded with negative stuff, that you guys are not doing your job, but I'm telling you guys that you have done your job helping us. Linda Westergaard and Carl Voss, I want to give you guys big thanks, along with Steve Neighbors and John Davis. You guys have been in communication with me without, throughout these years, throughout this year, and I appreciate it a lot. Carl Voss, thank you so much for pushing Vision Zero in the city, because that's made a big difference. Linda, your phone calls, your persistence with everybody to get stuff done, I really appreciate it. Last week, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, when I decided that I was going to speak, the reason why was because I, because I received these pictures of the progress being done on University and East 17th Street, where they were preparing to make the crosswalk there. And today, they put the most important spot on there, which is that hawke light. You guys have been, for me, easy to work with. We've gone back and forth, but I appreciate you guys, my family, my neighborhood, appreciate everyone of you guys in City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thanks.
Adam Kellinan.
Hello, Adam Kellinan, Ward Three. Would like to make a few comments on a few things. One is the Walnut Street Bridge item that was on the consent agenda. I think it was a great idea to pedestrianize it, maybe have it for bikes as well. There's talk about all movement of traffic. The replacement project would be all movement of cars specifically. I can tell you, as somebody that does bike downtown, the bridge is one of the most stressful parts to bike across, because there really isn't room on most of the bridges for bikes. So it would have been a big change. And I just wanted to say that because it wasn't a public speaking time, too, for that. And also that, talk about like how there's going to be more traffic going to the Market District, hopefully. It would have been great to have a way to suggest to people, to encourage people to walk or bike there rather than driving there. Yeah, I also wanted to reiterate some things that most of you have heard a few times now, that I think we need virtual access and hybrid meetings. There are a lot of people who cannot come to these meetings for several reasons. Some people are disabled and still can't come in the public very easily with COVID still going on or other accessibility issue reasons. There's people who can't always put their kids in daycare or have a job they're working and can't always get here on time. We need to have that, and as a city as big as we are, with as much money as we are, we just spent how many millions of dollars in one meeting, just took that much debt on. We should be able to find a way to make our meetings open to everybody. Thank you.
Jolene Prescott.
I live at 30133rd Street in Des Moines, and I'm going to tell you something about myself. I have had bouts with anxiety and depression since my freshman year in college. I know firsthand experience. Even though I may be struggling with mental health issues, I still need to show professionalism in and with the workplace. That includes asking for help and getting time off if needed. In 2014, I did so. In the end, I ended up taking early retirement and left teaching. It was one of the hardest things I have ever done, but something I needed to do for my mental health. Indira, please, please, show some professionalism. Ignoring the city of Des Moines and your constituents is not acceptable. If you are not up to dealing with this situation, please get someone to talk to the city on your behalf. You owe it to the people who represent you. It's time, Indira. There's something also I wanted to add. I know that Connie and Carl have been picking up the slack from Indira's absence, and I want to thank you so much for doing that. That shows the importance of our at-large people in a very striking way. Thank you for your time.
Susan Hook.
I have a stack. Susan Hook, I live at 717 Locust Street, the R and T lofts. We have 166 families within that loft alone. We have to pay to park, we have to pay to work, and I would venture to say not one of you have to live in your neighborhoods and have parking meters to plug just to live downtown Des Moines, or go to work, or we have amazing, our projects that we can't even take people to. My family won't come to Des Moines because they have to pay for parking. I have a stack of all these businesses on Ingersoll. It's all redone. We encourage business, we have restaurants, we have opportunities, we have doctors that we can go to, Wiley's, everything on Ingersoll is free. You come down and you're talking about doing a bridge down here, why? So you can put up another parking meter so somebody has to pay to come when we live down here? Like I said, there's 166 families just in our loft alone. Nobody is addressing the families' needs. You are wanting to purchase the Des Moines Police Department? We have such a greater need than a new police department. If you walk through, there are so many people down in Des Moines, homeless people. I would challenge any of you to walk by the library. Thank God they just hired a social worker permanently at the library, but we have homeless people. We are not doing it justice for them. Instead of paying all this money for it, I put support, please, believe in them 100%. But we have more shootings, not just at the place on Ingersoll, but in the, the East Village. One night, there were eight shootings just on that night. So I think there's a greater need than more parking meters, because you're just dividing this as.
We need to move on.
Thank you.
Carolyn Yulenaki Walker has called and said she will not be able to make it this evening, so we'll move on to David Helstern.
I'm Dave Helstern. I live at 803 Hickman in Ward One. I'm the attorney at Sullivan Ward in West Des Moines. I'm here tonight to represent at least five of the Ward One residents, and we're asking you to take action, to set a hearing to remove Indira Schumacher. It comes down to timing. We've given her five months. There's been no response, there's been no help. I echo the previous speaker's statements that, thank God, we had Connie Bozen and Carl Voss, because we would have been lost without you guys at large, and we really appreciate all your help for taking up the slack. But Ward One needs to have representation, and we can't wait until her reelection, her term is up, and that's January of 2026, and we can't wait to force the Ward One residents to take court action. You guys have the ability to just set this for a hearing. You just had a bunch of hearings. All you got to do is give her notice. She shows up, we have a back and forth, and we present our evidence, you guys take a vote. If you vote to remove her, we can get it on the November election still. The timing will work. If you can put it for hearing August 21st or September 11th at your meeting, we could have it on the November election. But if you don't, and you force the Ward One residents to file a petition, pay the filing fee, get a bond, go through, go through a court hearing, whatever discovery they've got to do, and when they finally get the order, guess what? There's going to have to be a special election. And who's going to get to pay that? The taxpayers. So rather than put this on a special election and force these taxpayers to spend a bunch of money upfront and then a bunch of money on a special election, how about you guys just set it for hearing, and we get this done, get this issue resolved, and behind us once and for all, get it on the November election, you guys are done.
I'll move to receive and file 70A, B, C, D, and F.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
I'm making a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We sit adjourned. I want to thank all of our citizens for attending this evening and for your input and as your patience as we work through our agendas. We will look forward to your input again, and at this time, this meeting is adjourned.